Good evening, everybody.
Evening.
We'll be reconvening the zoning hearing board on the matter of the city of Harrisburg. We have already concluded the evidentiary part of the hearing, and this evening we'll be hearing closing arguments from both of the parties. Mr. Sur, would you like to go first? And if you'd like, you may reserve some of your time for rebuttal.
I guess I would reserve some time. I don't know if I'll need it, but I'll go there, right. Again, good evening. I'm Charlie Sur, Attorney, Special Counsel for the City of Harrisburg. Is this on? I don't know if you can...
Can you hear in the audience?
All right. I'll try to talk loudly. We've had numerous hearings on this application, but really, in my view, this case presents a very simple case of an expansion of the nonconforming use. Don't be misled by the township's 64-page submission, which is full of rabbit holes for you guys to try to trip into. The evidence establishes that prior to 2003, the school district was using the property to deliver, to accumulate, store, and to compost leaves over a very certain defined area. And this was valid as part of their school use that they used for multiple things since they acquired the property in 1973, as the leaves came from the school district's properties, part of their maintenance functions. In 2006, there was an ordinance change, which, for the first time, defined municipal facilities, which should not include the school district or any other local government agency other than Susquehanna Township, the county, the Commonwealth, of course, the national government. And the composting activity has continued until the current time. Now, the city's proposal is certainly larger. It covers a larger area. It's certainly more intensive, and it's certainly being managed. But it's really doing the same thing. Leaves are brought to the site, they're decomposed, and they're turned into mulch. The evidence establishes it is the exact same chemical process that's happening, and the same activity is happening there. That makes it a continuation of the nonconforming use, from what the school district was doing with their leaves to what the city is proposing. Now, the township has regulations on for the expansion of the nonconforming use in Section 2204 Sub 2. There's four criteria. The first is whether it's on the same lot, and it is. The second is, it does not replace or get rid of an existing conforming use. And it does not do that. The lot is, for all intents and purposes, vacant. Does it meet the dimensional requirements within the conservation district? And again, it does do that. And then there's the point of the extension of uses within structures. The nonconforming use within structures cannot exceed 25%. We believe we meet that, too, and I'll get to that point in a moment. So we believe all the regulations for the expansion of the nonconforming use are met. Then we move to the general standards for a nonconforming use. Sorry, for a special exception use, which are applicable regardless of the special exception, and that is in Section 27-2613. First two, are you really in harmony with the area, general amorphous standards? Across the street is the DEP composting facility. There's been no testimony that that facility is problematic, has any adverse effect, or is causing anyone any problems. In fact, very well, maybe people didn't even know it was there. We believe this fits in directly with the neighbor across the street. The third criteria generally deals with traffic, an increase in traffic causing congestion going forth. There's no testimony that there's congestion of the roads. In fact, the testimony from our engineer established that the roads, the private road accessing the site, can easily handle the traffic that's anticipated from the city's So why isn't this case so straightforward? Why does the township submit a 64-page document setting forth all the reasons they believe the application should be derived? My submission was significantly less than that. I think the answer's simple. It's the identity of the applicant. It has nothing to do with the technical standards for a composting facility or any perceived harms. And how do we know that? Well, the testimony of the zoning officer was that if the township, Susquehanna Township or Dauphin County, were proposing identical use on the property, it would be allowed as of right with no zoning hearing board approval. That's interesting. Why would the township allow a problematic use to go in as of right for the identical thing? And further, the township engineer testified that the effects, if someone came in like that, the Susquehanna Township or Dauphin County would put in a similar facility, the effects would be the same as the proposed city composting facility. It would be no different. The only thing that's different is the identity of the applicant, between what could come in here as of right and what's being forced to go through a zoning hearing board process for the expansion of the nonconforming use. Now, let's look at some of those rabbit holes we think the township put out there for you. First, they say there is no existing nonconforming use from the school district. The brief uses words such as "an outlandish argument," "wild proposition," "novel concept," "artificially stretched." Wow. I don't think it was that bad. We had testimony that there was composting of leaves on the property well before the ordinance was changed, since the early 2000s going through. The school has used this property since 1973. The only use that it could possibly fit underneath in the C District would be a municipal facility. And there's no evidence that there's any citations or violations issued to the school district for doing what they were doing on the property from the township. Only now, 40 years, some after 1973, or 10, 15 years after the ordinance change, do we come up and hey, oh, by the way, you can't do this there. It's illegal. The maintenance of the school district's leaves is integral part of what they were doing as their function, and that's what the composting was there for. Obviously, the school went away, and they're using it for a couple of other different things now, but the composting facility was there. There also is no permit required for the composting facility, as testified by our engineer. So the lack of a permit is irrelevant. Second rabbit hole I think the township wants to drag you down to is say that there's, even if there was a nonconforming use, you don't meet the definitions for an expansion, primarily because you're doing a new or different use. And I will agree, if there is a new use happening on there, it doesn't qualify as an expansion of nonconforming use. That's clear. And that's what the Harrisburg Gardens case was teaching us. When Harrisburg Gardens decided to do a different manufacturing process on their property, it was correctly denied as an expansion of a nonconforming use. Very basic. But that's not what happened here. Again, leaves coming on, composting, decaying, same chemical process happening to at the very end. We don't believe it is a different use. There also is no size limitation in the ordinance. Of course, the township caught this when they adopted ordinance Section 1902, sorry, Ordinance 1902, which is really the best evidence that there was no area limitation on the expansion. Underneath this application, the amount of area expanded for a nonconforming use is not regulated. It is afterwards, but it is not subject to this application. The other point about the Harrisburg Garden case is, when they talk about the expansion of the nonconforming use in the natural expansion doctrine, they talk about an accommodation of an increase in trade. It's really not applicable here, because there is no trade. This is not a commercial operation happening here. There's no business to be expanded. And I noted that none of the cases cited in the township brief dealing with this had a governmental agency, which wasn't doing a business, was trying to expand something going forth on that. That's simply not there. So again, I don't think that the Harrisburg Gardens case, for either a different use defeating this application, or the lack of some sort of natural expansion of the nonconforming use doctrine, applies. Back to the rabbit holes. I think there's a third one that comes up here. Township alleges that we have not met the supplemental regulations, and they go forth, there's really three supplemental regulations that they come forth with. First one, again, as I just mentioned, is Ordinance 1902, which is the area limitations. They believe it's not a, first of all, it was adopted after this application was filed. And it's clear, under Section 917 of the MPC, a special exception application gets the same protection that a land development plan would be, if a land development plan would be filed concurrently with or pursuant to that special exception application. And the application here proposes two nonresidential buildings. That meets the definition of land development under the MPC as well as underneath the township. In fact, the MPC only says one nonresidential building. The second regulation that we supposedly don't meet is regarding the 25% building expansion, which is in the current ordinance, Section 2204 Sub 2. And it reads as follows. "The extension of uses within, nonconforming uses within structures shall not exceed and increase the 25% of the gross floor area occupied by the nonconforming use." That sentence presupposes that there is an existing nonconforming use within a structure. When that's the case, the structure can only be expanded by 25%. The school district's nonconforming use of the composting never happened within the structure. It was always outside. We don't believe it applies. Now, the township has a nice math equation in their brief, which says zero times 25% equals zero. If you can give any credence to that, there's a possible interpretation on that. I think you have two interpretations here, the one I just said, and maybe the one the township says. And when that happens, MPC 603.1 is clear that the applicant wins, if there is ambiguity or an interpretation, multiple interpretations to any given ordinance section. The third section that we are not supposedly beating has to do with the requirements for a waste disposal or processing facility. We didn't meet the requirements set forth in zoning ordinance Section 27-2011. But we never claimed to be that use, which is the reason why we never presented testimony on that use, because we don't believe that use is relevant to the existing application, and is clearly not permitted within the C District. But the zoning officer really cleared this up for you. The zoning officer testified that leaves, which is the subject matter being composted here, or disposed of or processed, does not fit the definition of municipal waste or hazardous waste, which are prerequisites for that use. When you look at the definition of a waste disposal, a processing facility, you have to go through that. It's a very long definition. If it doesn't meet that definition, it doesn't qualify underneath that use, which is why we didn't do it. So of course, we didn't meet those sections. We didn't try to. We don't think that they're relevant. Fourth big rabbit hole we think you're going to fall into, the township thinks this is detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare. And again, the township engineer testified that the effect of the city proposal would be no different than a facility of similar size, scope, and manner, which would be offered, operated by the township, Dauphin County, Commonwealth. It's permitted as of right. There is no evidence of harm coming in. There was certainly speculation. People have views about it. We know people don't, some people do not want this facility here, and it's perfectly clear that the township doesn't want this facility here. But there's no evidence of harm that this would do compared to any other type of composting facility, which could go in, and there's one operating right across the street. Finally, I get to my fifth rabbit hole that we have, and it has to do with standing. It comes back again. There is a valid option agreement. It allows the city to proceed with this application. It has been confirmed by Harrisburg City Council. At a future date, if this project gets through the regulatory hurdles, there will be a lease or a license agreement entered into, which will go through whatever processes are necessary, whether it's an intermunicipal agreement, a cooperation agreement, or any other type of formalized agreement that will happen. Option agreements are common in nonresidential settings to proceed with zoning and other municipal applications. Now, the township's going to go next, of course, and they're going to take you down all those rabbit holes we said, and all the reasons why you should deny this application. But it's really not that hard. If you look at what was happening beforehand with the leaves, the process is happening again. If you find that it is the same process that's happening, we fit squarely within the expansion of the nonconforming use. And just remember, we believe it's the identity of the applicant which is the real issue here. And should that be the reason why the city's application is denied? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sur. Mr. Diamond, are you ready?
And Jim Diamond from Eckerd Siemens. We are solicitors for the township. And in fact, we did submit a very long brief. We think everything that is in there is not a rabbit hole. We think it's well documented with appropriate citations to the record and legal authority. But I do think there are some very simplistic things here we can talk about. And I do think it is very basic. And quite frankly, the identity of the applicant is very important. It is under the ordinance, and there's no validity challenge, remember. Equally important is the identity of the owner. So the applicant's city, under the guise of enlarging a claimed, established, nonconforming use, demands the right to develop what is, in essence, a massive new yard waste facility for the city of Harrisburg with a mulch manufacturing operation that actually had no need coming from this property or any operations on this property, whether they were governmental, whether they were private, whether they're nonprofit, there's no necessity. And we have to remember, this is in the conservation district. And in the conservation district at all times, at all relevant times, even when they're alleging that there was something that was the identical thing because leaves were naturally decomposing, remember, this kind of facility was a prohibited facility. So that causes them to have to argue, there's an exception that existed back at that time, and if a municipality had been running it, then that would have been within that exception. Without that, they can't win. So in the very basic starting point, very basic threshold point to start with any nonconforming use case is, they have to prove, establish that there was a real nonconforming use. Here, uniquely, there are two components of that, because even if, and our position is they clearly did not prove there's a composting facility, even if they proved there was one in 2003, it would have been unlawful under the zoning ordinance, unless, they say, a municipality, if it was a municipal facility. So that first hurdle, and remember, they have to get over many hurdles, and I think in our brief, and if they trip on one, they have to, and I think we pointed out many, many, many. But when we started this real basic point, the first thing they had to prove, and they claimed, and they alleged, and they said were, that the school district was a municipality prior to 2000s. They presented no evidence whatsoever in support of that. They cited no law in support of that. And in fact, in common sense use of municipality, it's towns, it's cities, it's not school districts. And the zoning ordinance wasn't silent. It referred to the dictionary, and that had the common sense meaning, which wouldn't include a school district. And no law that they cited would include a school district is well-established in Pennsylvania. A school district is not a municipality under any law. If that, if they can't prove that, they have to lose the whole case. If we pretend that's not an issue, we still aren't at the point where they've established that starting point protected nonconforming use, because then they got to show there really was a thing that was this same kind of animal as a composting facility. And contra, I think the evidence and the regulations are crystal clear that they would have needed a DEP permit. And even their own expert, although they're now painting it as he said it wasn't required, what he kept saying was, if I would have been representing them, I would have had them do this, and they would have had it. But there's no question, if they were intending to run a facility at all, the leaf piles of, at one point they're saying, an acre, I don't think the evidence supports that, but there would have needed to be a permit. And there's no evidence, and if you look at what they were claiming was evidence, this is a casual haphazard, there was one maintenance person that said, in the 90s and early 2000s, we at times would take the leaves over and drop them behind the house. And remember what, if we didn't even have this absolute, they have to lose issue about municipality, if this were just a regular, nonconforming use, if you go back to the very initial landmark cases they all talk about, first basic thing is, it has to be established in the sense that it's widely known in the community. It's known. It's a known thing. It's not hidden behind a house. It's not something that DEP didn't know about, the township didn't know about, the neighbors didn't know about. Someone is on this 42-acre property, dropping some piles of leaves to rot forever, totally unmanaged, and they try to make it sound like there was a processing going on. In fact, although they only had a 16-page submission, there's a point where they talk about processing with, you know, a piece of equipment, and it's totally counter to the testimony, as I think this board should find. They showed a picture, so, and that gentleman testified, and his testimony clearly distinguished it from everything that the experts were saying would be involved in a real composting facility. There was no management, there were no windows, there were no turning, you know, there was no product. Then they said, well, we have another piece of evidence. We're showing this, these two pictures that span right before and right after. And I think those, if you look at those pictures, there's no way they could represent two different times. We don't know what those are. But in any event, their own witnesses said, we have no personal knowledge for a decade, so between 2006 and 2016, when the expert shows up, nobody knows what's going on. There's no evidence of anything. There's some aerial photos in, and they show what look like empty space. In any event, they would have to prove there was a lawful, and again, if it wasn't a municipality, it would be prohibited under the zoning ordinance, and no nonconforming use was registered. There are no, there's no showing that back at that time, anybody knew anything was going on. It's fenced in, compound, this is in the middle of it. So we're, yeah, is this a very basic, the reason of 64 pages, it's one thing after the other, like everywhere you turn, it's, you've got to be kidding me, this is the argument? So we go to this, you know, when I look at that municipality, yes, an ordinance could have an artificial definition. Statute can have an artificial definition. A statute could say that a house is a car, or a car is a house. But they have to show us, okay, where did it say that? Because they're the ones with this, I do think it's a wild proposition to say, well, school district, that's a municipality, or hospital's a municipality, whatever it is. Okay, show me where it says that. Not, oh, you can't prove that it isn't, it doesn't have this wild definition because it didn't have definition in there, but our ordinance actually said, look at the dictionary. This is basic stuff. But it's a, it's a common sense thing. And yes, if, so when we talk about identities of who the players are, the fact that the player they're claiming was doing something, and no reason to think the school board knew about that, anybody intentionally, hey, if some maintenance people occasionally drop something off on this 42-acre thing, it's a very de minimis, casual thing. If the school district were intending to run a composting facility, I pause that they would have gotten a permit. They would have done it the right way, you know. But in any event, they haven't really proven there's anything that's an animal close to a real composting facility. And there certainly was no production facility of any kind. There was no finished mulch ever, they were talking about it rotting forever, these leaves just being dropped there. And yes, their expert testified, and I think it's almost an insult to the board, but it was concept of, well, if we have a forest, anywhere there are deciduous trees, if it falls on the ground, that's composting. At that point, the whole world is composting. It's just, but they haven't proven the basic starting, they don't even get out of the starting blocks. And then, we really do have the next big fundamental part of Pennsylvania zoning law, if you want to expand a nonconforming use. And they can't hide behind, well, it didn't say anything about governments, because there are cases that say, whether it's for-profit, nonprofit, whatever it is, you don't get to just expand without proving a necessity of that use on the subject property. Wholly incompatible with that is the concept they talked about. So this had nothing to do with, oh, the school district has more leaves, or we bought the school district property, and we're trying to expand something that has some connection to whatever the use was there. Remember what they told us. They were looking all over central Pennsylvania, and when you look at all their documents, they're not, none of their documents talk about, there's an existing use on there. When they do their resolutions, all those things, they're talking about finding a place, citing a new, establishing, citing and establishing a new facility. And this facility, they admitted, the need for this is totally driven by the needs of the city. Nothing to do with anything that was ever going on that subject property. And almost astoundingly, in the last hearing, they came in, because until that, and quite frankly, it's amazed me how the story keeps changing, because every time it seems like they're hemmed in with an issue, well, no, we're not going to do that, now we're going to do this. But one of the things that just astounded me was in the last hearing, where the expert came in and said, I got to correct the record, and said, you know, because until then, they were talking about this being kind of a jointly, joint composting thing, and the school district's leaves would be composted, at least there's some connection. Now, that's not getting merged in. That's going to be separate. So we're talking about the functional equivalent of, there's a lemonade stand here that nobody knows about, they're going to keep the lemonade stand and bring in a Walmart. A whole second, very materially different, intensive, and their expert, if you look at, said, this is for DEP purposes, the magnitude we're talking about, this is an industrial-type level. And you really look at, they're talking about 5,500, you know, cubic yards of compost per year. We're talking about, and it's interesting, we never should have to get to, is it detrimental to the community, because they don't get out of the blocks here. And it's, and I won't repeat all the things in the brief, but I think we go through, yeah, here's why that 25% does apply. And one proposition I disagree with legally, and I cited the cases for this, this is, you know, unequivocally established law. When we're talking about these not- When we're talking about these nonconforming uses and those provisions, if there is an ambiguity with two interpretations, the normal rule of you do the least restrictive in favor of the landowner or applicant interpretation does not apply. As a matter of law, nonconforming uses are contrary to the legislative intent. By law, if there is that kind of ambiguity, you must apply the more restrictive one. And I don't think it is, there's an ambiguity. I think it's pretty clear, 25%, if I had a thousand square foot thing, and I'm only allowed to add 250, why would somebody that has zero have no restriction? And if you look at the case law, it's actually predefined when you start talking about enclosing a nonconforming use. And there's a dichotomy of, if it's over land where the use already is established, we don't think there's any use established, then that's a pretty light lift, because the nonconforming use is just getting walls over. If you move over to another piece of the same parcel where it doesn't exist, that's a very big deal. That's really, you're almost talking about, you know, variance kind of level. And here, they haven't requested any variances. They haven't questioned or attacked the validity of any component of the ordinance. But they never get out of the blocks here. It's clear it wasn't a known thing, and these are, you know, dispositive, and...
Mr. Diamond, if I may interrupt, would you refer me to the case that talks about that being, you know, where the most restrictive law?
Yeah, I hope I cited it. If not, let's see here. Page 40 at the top, a couple cases cited about the typical zoning law principle would be to construe it in the least restrictive manner. But case law is that because this is outside of what is intended, you know, when you're talking about nonconforming use, you're really talking about, everybody knows it's a prohibited use, and you're saying, I'm constitutional, I'm grandfathered, and I'm entitled to certain protection. There's no question, if they had established this, they would, they would have been entitled. And quite frankly, if the city had run a real composting facility in 2003, they would have been a municipality. They would be protected. They still would have to show, not only there's a need to expand, but also the extent, they don't get to, you know, there's got to be some, so, yes, we think there are also additional stops.
And you did mean to say the city, not the school?
I'm sorry, the city, yes. So if the city had been running it, the city would have been a municipality. Now the city isn't. Now, it is, and there's some logic to this. So if you look at who is, it's the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, it's the United States of America, it's the county of Doffin, and it's township of Susquehanna. Those are the only four governmental entities in the world that our residents get to vote for who the elected officials are. There's a direct accountability legally. If it's the city of Harrisburg, these folks don't get to vote. They don't have a right under the Sunshine Act to get up and comment. If they're not a taxpayer, not a resident. It's not a, and again, they didn't attack the validity of this, so if there's, we think it's reasonable, it's defensible, but there's no allegation, no legal basis to say there's any impropriety. They almost try to make it sound like there's some exclusionary issue or something. There's no, they could be putting in, there are parts of town where you can put in a composting facility. And yes, it might be, there are certain governmental kind of things that are, you know, for the people that are accountable to me as a voter, that they are going to service our community, that, yeah, they're treated differently. There is, yes, I agree, there's a critical difference who the applicant is. That's our law. And nobody said it's improper. And there is no basis to say it's improper. And it's also critical, the identity of the owner and what that identity was back in 2003. So, like I said, we have pages and pages of hurdles. If they trip over one hurdle, they lose. And I won't go down all the quote-unquote rabbit holes. I think they're all solid. I'm saying they don't even get to start to argue about those things. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that. And you've concluded?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. At this time, the board will retire and consider everything that's been presented in the case, and we will come out and give you our decision shortly. So we'll recess for a few moments. The zoning hearing board will come to order again. And before we issue our decision, I would like to take a few moments and speak on behalf of the board. This has been an extraordinary hearing for us, having gone on for several months, I think since last November, with the various issues have been before us. And I wanted to thank everybody involved for all of your participation. It's so good to see so many citizens here and so many elected officials. One of my favorite sayings is a quote that the League of Women Voters often uses, that democracy is not a spectator sport. And it really, you're all to be commended for your participation in this, and it is great. It makes all of us on the board feel good. We're all volunteers, and we're happy to feel that we are doing a service for the citizens of our community, as are all of you elected officials who are here tonight and who have come and participated, spoken during public comments, and all of you citizens also. We appreciate that. And it has taken a lot of endurance and perseverance and patience. You have been most faithful in showing up each month, and this is the best system that we have, and we can't always predict what we will be doing each evening or where we'll end up. And everyone has been very patient, and we appreciate that. So having said that, and I'm speaking on behalf of our board and thanking all of you for your service, including the council for both parties, for being so cooperative and thorough, and also our transcribers, who have had to pick up the pieces month after month and put them all together for us, and for our council, who stepped in at the last moment, the day before, when our regular council couldn't appear, and I don't think you expected to be with us nine months later, but here we are. And so, in conclusion, we do have a decision to make. And as I've always said, we'll give you our oral decision tonight, and to be followed up with our written decision. And our decisions are appealables to the Court of Common Pleas. So do I have a motion this evening?
Yes. I move that the zoning hearing board deny the request for special exception filed by the city of Harrisburg.
Is there a second?
I'm seeking a motion.
And how do you vote, Ms. Cor?
I vote in favor of the motion.
And Ms. Kornfick?
In favor.
I also vote in favor of the motion. And so the motion for a request for special exception filed by the city of Harrisburg is denied. Good evening.
[applause]